So let's go ahead and uh call this meeting on Michigan City Finance Committee's order. Uh Committee Member President Wieski.
Here.
Committee Member Tillman.
Here.
And myself is Patrick here. We have a quarrel. So let's go ahead and get through it. I got a uh late email from Controller Hofmeister saying that she would not be able to attend or wouldn't be able to stay on longer. So uh we probably won't give a lot of the questions that we have answered in that respect. I don't know if one of the deputy controllers or something could uh go down for her, but move along.
So uh first is the the claims. We have the Boyd Riverboat Claim Docket. We had a the one invoice for the the farmer's market. Uh uh Councilwoman Tillman, Councilman Presleyski, did you have a chance to review that?
I uh I did and uh I believe that it's uh I believe that it's a fair price for the outline of uh the duties that that I looked at the agreement and uh I think that it's it's fair. You know, for the compensation and the amount of time, you know, I don't know. I I think it's a fair a fair price.
Thank you, Councilman President. Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, I agree. I just had a couple of questions. One is, is this the same person that we previously had that oversaw the farmer's market? And is this was this already was this position or the person for this to oversee this? Was this prior approved?
Um, no, this is a new person. And and the contract that was attached to the email sent out is is the contract that the Board of Works approved last week Monday, or I'm sorry, this Monday. Honestly, I don't know what day of the week it is. They approved it last week Friday at a special meeting. And the and the money was appropriated in the 2021 budget in the Boyd Development.
And I don't know if this is where I can ask this question or not. So when a position like this opens up, is it open to everyone or is this a hand select position?
Um, I'm not who you're I'm not sure who you're addressing that to, um, but I'm not involved in that process. We just get the contract.
Okay. So so then I guess my question would be then that probably would be a question for someone from the Board of Works. If if the contracts is open to other vendors or is it to someone that was already selected?
Right. In in the past, um, I'm being told that the events planner has been appointed that that handles this.
Is this?
That that they seek out somebody for that, um, you know, to fill that position.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions make other council members?
I can't hear.
It says Jean's muted.
Yeah, you're muted. We could hear you.
Okay.
There you go. We can. We could for a second.
That's muted.
Were there any other questions involving the the claims for the the Boyd Councilman Presleyski?
Yeah, I you know, I I was wondering if that if this falls under the guidelines of a proposal for professional fur services and are we hiding under the fact that it's less than a hundred thousand dollars or whatever? So you don't have to advertise it. Jim, if what am I?
Assuming it's I'm assuming it's just because of the since it's a personal service that there's no need to. It's not a public works. It's not a purchase uh of a product, so you don't have to advertise it. I don't have a contract or whatever, but my understanding is just somebody that managed the market.
Right.
So it's just a service. They're not providing any product or constructing anything.
Were there uh were there any other questions? If not, is there a a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Tillman. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All the favor seeing fellows say aye. Motion approved. So we'll recommend that that be paid. Okay, so uh see as that we're in a time crunch because Controller Hofmeister has to leave shortly. Is there uh is there anything that is of higher importance that we need to address while here? Uh, so we have the establishing rules and deadlines for the preparation and submission of drafts of the proposed annual city budgets and tax levies to the council. And then amending ordinance forty-five forty-nine commonly known as the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance to increase the hourly rate of pay for administrative assistance in the park department. And then we have uh reviewing the farmer's scholarship and event coordinator positions. So uh to the committee members, is is any one of those of higher importance? Councilman President Wieski.
I just want to say that I uh am in full support of the of the ordinance to establish deadlines for the prep of and submission of drafts on the proposed budget. And that I would like to ask the question on amending this salary ordinance. Um, if we're amending the salary ordinance to increase it, why are we doing that if the if the salary was set last year in the budget?
I'd like to answer that, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Uh, sure.
So I sent um the entire council a spreadsheet of comparable jobs within the city and the wages. And if you look at the park department, um, we're significantly lower in our pay rates for the same work, the same positions. Um, if any of you read the email, I've been addressing this for this will be the seventh year. I have tried to address this in the last six budget cycles to just bring the park department up to equal pay for equal work. This is not a request to the council for additional funding. And the reason that it came up again at this point where I didn't want to wait for another budget cycle is we have another vacant position. Um, in contrast, the clerk's office has a vacant position that pays fifteen sixty-nine an hour. So any transfers from the city, people that are familiar with government, have some training, they tend not to apply to our department or stay. So we've had a couple that have transferred out in recent years to other city departments. We're just trying to get a fair wage, so we're competitive with transfers within the city and so we can attract good people from outside the city that will stay and have longevity.
Uh, I got a quick question. So the position that you said just recently became vacant, uh, what caused that vacancy?
Uh, retirement.
And with the retirement, when was the last time that rate of pay was increased with that individual?
So our employees get the same raises as all city employees, um, and it's usually dictated by the mayor, I believe, Yvonne. Um, I know we went for about a five or six year period where there were no raises because of the tax shortfalls we had in La Porte County from the tax caps. So it's usually like one to two percent. But everybody gets the one to two percent. So our staff has never been brought up to the same level as a payroll clerk in the police department or central services or street and on and on and on. We're just way below. Um, and it's just difficult for us right now to fill our positions with people who will stay and have some longevity.
And one more question then I'll bring up the committee. The individual has recently left the park department. How long were they at this position?
She worked for us for fourteen years.
So it was the same person in in this one position for fourteen years?
Correct.
And they were only receiving the annual increases that everyone was seeking?
That's correct.
And then with this, you're looking to make this retroactive to uh March seventh of twenty-twenty-one? What's the reason for that?
Actually, I'm not looking to make it retroactive. Retroactive to our payroll clerk who's been in the position for many, many years, but not the vacant position. So the vacant position would just be the increased wage if the council approves it upon hiring. We're in the interview process right now to fill that position.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other questions?
You're welcome.
No, you pretty much covered the ones I was getting ready to ask as well. Thank you.
Top up President Wieski.
Well, you know, I can I can uh understand what you're saying, but I'm still trying to figure out if you guys didn't get a pay raise, what happened to three point two or three point four million dollars out of nineteen uh twenty nineteen? And uh uh why that money wasn't spread around because there was a heck of a lot of money for raises that year? And I believe that um you're not the only department that has a problem with pay. Because I just want to share with the Finance Committee, um, uh, I believe there's an advertised position or uh a position out in the public for drivers at the street department. And you have to have a C D L for like sixteen dollars and eighty cents. And that's, you know, I I'm I believe that we have to look at all the inequities, but I don't know if we can make them all up at at this time. Um, and I think that I don't know what the heck you guys were doing for eight years and why you didn't get uh any pay raises because somebody was getting pay raises. And uh I just think I I'm just in the position that the budget's set and that's what it is. Because we can't be if if we do this in the middle of the streams, we're going to have everybody barking at us. All right, when when the budget does come out. But you you gave a raise to this individual and the budget was already set. I think that we should just go and see what happens in the budget process. And we we have to go from there. What's proposed what's proposed to us? And uh what you guys uh get done and propose with the mayor? Because everybody everybody needs something. And uh, you know, I was talking to uh the street department today. And it was about monies. So we still have we have to address a lot of things in the next year. And with I don't know if we're going to be able to address all this money problems um with this uh money that's coming in. And I'm not making any promises. I'm just discussing it because there's a lot of stuff that we have to look at before we even get to that point. So I think that in a way that I think in a way that you guys are throwing us a curve ball. Because then you're going to say, well, you approved the salary here and we didn't stick to the budget process. But the budget is set. And I I'm just saying that I I believe and I, okay, you didn't get an increase. And I'm sure somebody if somebody won't transfer to your department, that maybe you can hire off the street and save some money on longevity. All right? I'm sure there's somebody out there that would uh you could go through the interview department, but I think that's not right. I I really think it's not right to do that in the middle of the stream or three quarters of the way.
I'm sorry. May I interrupt for just one second? I I need to sign off. So um if anybody has any other questions for me, please email them to me. I will answer them. I'm on vacation next week, but I will try to get answers to any of your questions while I'm gone. So um, everybody have a very nice weekend. Happy Easter and I will see everybody on the twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good vacation, Yvonne.
Okay, um, since we don't have a controller, we'll see how how far this goes. Uh, I'll see why a deputy controller or someone else from the office couldn't have been to try to ask some of these questions. I think it's a little disconcerting or unfair to have us a question via emails and we have this forum that's public. So the public can be involved and at least hear what we're discussing. So um, we'll see how it goes. Uh, Councilwoman Tillman. You're muted.
Um, just a couple of things. One, just the last statement that you made in regards to that our um controller had to leave. Um, that's the whole purpose of having multiple individuals within that department. So that is for me unacceptable that there isn't someone else to fill in to um represent on behalf of the controller's office. Questions were submitted to the controller in a timely manner to where they could have been prepared for those questions. Um, so hopefully moving forward, um, that we all continue to respect, um, knowing that there is a meeting that if you're unable to attend, that you have a representative from your department standing in. My other thing is, um, going through the budget hearings through twenty-twenty, um, we discussed a lot of things. We discussed increases, decreases. Um, we made some we reduced some of the budget lines. And for me, these questions were asked. They were posed at that time and explanations was given before the Finance Committee made a decision to make any cuts. So just with that being said, as of right now, I will I am going to err on the side that I'm going to stand by the twenty-twenty budget, the twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, and as far as any increases, then that is something we will have to rediscuss um and it to be represented to us at the upcoming budget hearings.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Derry and then Mr. Easton.
Yeah, I'm just talking about chiming in about us sticking to the the budget. We just gave the lifeguards raises. Um, just we how much how much was that raised total? I can't remember the dollar amount. Was it thirty?
Five dollars per hour or thirty-six thousand annually if we got a full team.
Thirty-six thousand. Um, so we didn't stick to the budget there. Uh, we did an increase in salary there. And then I had a question. I didn't get a chance to get around to it uh before the meeting started. Um, I had an agenda that was sent to me to talk about what was on this meeting. And it only mentioned that it would be the two things on the Riverboat Docket. And then I got something that came out at eleven o'clock uh with all these different additions. Um, so I was actually going to delete this email because I I figured, you know, I already had it based on the the two items that were there. So we sent out something at eleven o'clock. And uh, we expect the, you know, the to shift gears for a meeting in 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 that amount of time. Um, you know, it it just it made no sense to me to see it uh from eleven o'clock, you know, to where we are four o'clock. But when did these additions happen to the agenda? Um, does this and I'm asking our attorney now, does this have to follow any kind of ruling in regards to the the forty-eight hours to notify the public of these changes or anything like that? Uh, or can every time we submit something, we just write on the end of it, um, agenda made is subject to change? And then you just make any kind of changes to the agenda before the meeting? Mr. Meyer, would you please answer that for me? Because I'm a little confused because, you know, I've been doing this five years now and I've never seen it happen like this. Every time I've tried to do something, you know, I've always been told in the clerk's office, well, we need uh at least forty-eight hours uh to do something. So I'm just, am I wrong? Correct me, please, Mr. Myers. Thank you.
Uh, Jim? Attorney Mike? Uh, I don't know if he's can hear us or not, but I submitted the uh the changes in reference to what came out with the agenda for the council meeting. So these additional items were financial nature and I agree that, I mean, I needed to have them on now so we could discuss them prior to getting to the council meeting. And just on that same note, this meeting was scheduled with plenty of time by the standard as far as notification. And Controller Hofmeister was notified and she sent us an email probably twenty minutes ago stating that she wouldn't be able to attend a full meeting, knowing that this is the Finance Committee meeting and she is the controller. So, you know, you got apples and oranges sometime with those things, but it is what it is. Everybody's got.
But what if somebody made plans based on the first agenda? I did. Like I said, I opened this just happenstance, opened this one up.
No, we should have first mentioned meetings going to be two minutes. So they should at least a lot enough time to discuss whatever it is. Uh, Ms. Easton?
Thank you, Councilman Fitzpatrick. I just wanted to um inform everyone at this meeting that we are not asking for additional funds from the council. So we are not steering for from the twenty-twenty-one approved budget. All we're asking you to do is to change your salary order. Um, by state statute, the park board has the right to create positions and set their pay. Um, and then it's your obligation to approve the annual salary order as part of the budget. So what we're looking for is a little over five thousand dollars to increase the wage of our positions just to be the same as other positions in the city. So um, for instance, our payroll clerk makes thirteen eighty-six. The controller's payroll clerk who does quite a bit more, I'll give you that, makes seventeen fifty-eight. The person in the clerk's office that does payroll, seventeen seventy-three. Planning and inspection, fifteen twenty-eight. Police department, sixteen dollars. Fire department, sixteen dollars. Central services, fourteen forty-seven. Sanitary district, which is a separate taxing entity, twenty dollars and twenty-five cents. Our payroll clerk makes thirteen eighty-six. She is also a city employee. So to me, it is unfair that you are paying unequal pay for the same position and the same work. We're not asking for extra money out of the budget. We're simply asking you to change that line item on the salary order and then to address the city salary study that was paid for by Mayor O'Meara in twenty-nineteen in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And it may be that the city can't afford um the recommendations that came out of that study, but those are two separate things. I'm trying to just make fair pay for fair.
Okay, on that on that on that note, thank you. Uh, so on that same note of fair work for fair pay, as the Assistant Superintendent and Mr. Shin as a superintendent, what do you guys make compared to other department heads? Can we line all those up and say it should be in line or one's making one amount and the other one doing a similar job should make the same amount? Or is it based on different things when it comes to that? Because I know from previous budgets that the superintendent, you guys are pretty well paid. I mean, you guys are close to where the mayor is. So it it's hard to say that one department head should make one thing or one department head should make something else when you're arguing that one uh supporting staff in one role should make something similar to what another supporting staff in a different capacity is making.
Yeah, agreed. I agree with you. We are very well paid um in the positions that we're at. And that was also addressed in the salary study. And keep in mind, the salary study compared um the city itself. I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to look at that. But they looked at different positions within the city and came up with an external low, external midpoint, external high. Um, Ed and I are both in that midway point. Then they went out and they studied regional jobs that are similar with an effort to maintain quality employees in the city. That's what the study was about. Um, so I agree with you, Councilman Fitzpatrick, that yes, and I do make a very decent wage. So I'm not arguing that. What I'm arguing is that a payroll clerk at the police station should not make two fifty an hour more than the payroll clerk at the park department that has a similar amount of employees and the same amount of duties and in some cases more, just by the nature of our seasonal business. And I'm not, again, asking for additional funding for this. And to Mr. Preswalinski's point, why didn't you give raises in twenty-nineteen? I will state again, this is the seventh year in a row that I have tried to address this inequity. And it just keeps getting turned down in the budget cycle year after year. The vacancy is what prompted me to say, you know what, we need to stand up again. We need to have a decent wage to attract good, long-term employees.
Uh, thank you, Sharon. Uh, Ms. Paul, Councilman Presleyski.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Well, I guess we're at the point where I didn't hear any of these discussions at the budget hearings with with reference to increasing this inequity. And that should have been the time because you had a you actually had a lot of new members on the city council. Um, so to bring it forward at this time, I feel that there were some problems inside the park department. Who helped put that, if I might ask, who helped put that budget together for the park department? Who 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 worked on the budget process?
Can I take this?
The budget.
Can I take this one?
Councilman Derry.
I didn't get my question asked. Excuse me.
I'm getting ready. I'm getting ready to ask. I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready to ask, I'm getting ready to answer that question.
Yeah, I know he.
I would like Sean, I would like Shannon or Ed to fill me in on who does the budget down there.
Okay, well, I have a comment and I'm gonna make my comment and they can answer the question. Uh, when the budgets are submitted by all of the department heads within the city, they can ask for whatever it is they want. Raises, things like that. But eventually, when the budget comes to the finance committee. Uh, that's after the mayor has determined whether or not they want to put raises in for the different departments. And once we get into the budget discussions, we can't increase the budget. Remember, we can only cut.
But excuse me, I understand that. So I understand.
After you finish, I'll let you um go that way.
I mean, it doesn't sound like you understand that because they can ask for a raise for everybody in the department. But when the budget comes out, that is the mayor's budget. He can decide whether or not to add those increases in the in any department. You know, and ask for salary check in the salary ordinances and 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 increases, but. It has to come out of that place first, then to the finance committee. Just to look it over and then all you can do is cut. You can't make those increases. So it makes no sense for any department head to. To come in there and ask for an increase because we can't do any increases. You can't do an increase and I'm not on the finance committee anymore.
So uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Darnley, uh, Councilman Preswellinsky and then Councilman, Councilwoman Tillman.
Well, with with that being said, Mr. Darnley. What I will point I was bringing out is that I know what the council. Can do and can't do. Excuse me. I don't know. I don't know. Excuse me. I don't need to be. At a session and getting preached to that. I don't know the uh. Different rules and that pertain to operation of the city council and. The finance committee, so on and so forth. I don't need to get preached at. But what I will say is the whole point is that there was no discussion brought up. At the finance meetings to increase this salary, which we could have asked because the mayor. Can amend that budget before it's passed. And that's the ju- the whole gist of it. So my point is that this was not brought. Up in front of us. Oh, and you're talking about being a inequity for seven years and it and you want to raise it, what, two fifty? Well, I just think that maybe there was a reason why it wasn't uh. Increased for some reason in that time period.
I want to get uh Councilwoman Tillman and see if anyone else in the uh, any other council members have a comment. Then we'll we'll try to move on from this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman, you're muted, Councilwoman.
Um, to add on to what Councilman um Chris Valinsky was stating. So to the question, who prepared or assisted in preparing your budget? But there is a meeting or discussion that is held with the mayor. So during that time, is not that conversation addressed then? For it for him to make a decision if he wants to uh increase that budget line for that, your particular for a particular department? Did you not all have that conversation? Or address your concerns of wanting to um have those salaries increased with the mayor at that time?
Yes, we did, Councilwoman Tillman. Um, so. I prepare the budget and then we do workshops with our park board, our superintendent and all of our uh department directors. So it's kind of a team effort. Again, when I say that I have brought this up seven years in a row, um. Our budget is presented to the mayor and the controller first. And then they say yes or no to any adjustments that we make to the budget before it goes to the council. This Councilman Darnley alluded to. So those raises were never approved, even though we had asked for them seven years in a row. They just have never been approved. When Mayor Perry took office, we discussed the salary study and whether. He intended to address that and he said he did intend to address it to, you know, kind of equal out. The wages throughout the city and then COVID hit. And then the financial problems ensued. Um. So yes, this was presented in the park department's budget for the last seven years and it's never made it past the mayor's. And the controller's office. Um, we did meet with the mayor and the controller's office. And they both agreed at this time that there is sufficient funding to fund these raises in the twenty twenty one budget. Without an additional appropriation, we're simply asking the council to change your salary ordinance. Which would make it legal because we can't pay something that's over the salary ordinance that you've already approved. But yes, it it was addressed with the mayor, two mayors over the last seven years.
And 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 that I understand. And all the while, then my question is. Your department had uh funds available to do this several years ago. And has it always gotten um the um denied at this point, up until this point?
That's correct.
Even though it was coming out of uh already what was budgeted into your um in your budget line?
No, no, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. No, um, in the past, when we. Put it into our budget, um, and it wasn't even the dollar eighty eight, I think that we're asking for now. It was a dollar. That was it. Each of the three admin members would make a dollar more a year. No, we were asking for an increase in the budget. Um, this year and last year, we had excess funds in our seasonal accounts. Because we didn't open the splash pad, because the parking operation closed down on July seventeenth. Um. So we have an excess in seasonal just because of uh COVID mainly. Um, but beyond COVID, right now, we have seventy two seasonal positions open. And we have twenty one filled. We are not able to attract a workforce. In our seasonal department, aside from our full-time. And I believe that um, that's because of the low pay rates that the city offers, you know. Some of our parking kids, and I'm talking kids, high school kids. Have left the parking operation to go to Menards because they can make fourteen dollars an hour with a two-dollar ship premium on the weekends. We start out at seven forty, seven dollars and forty cents an hour. We can't compete. With seasonal or full-time. So we're really struggling as a department right now to. Even fill positions to operate. Um, so to your point, no, we were asking for that in the budget. Um, but right now, we have an excess of seasonal funds that would fund it through this year until we get into the workshops for twenty twenty two. Um, and try to gain the mayor's support of increasing our wages to be. Equal with the other city employees that have the same job duties.
So wait, so this could be a temporary increase if if the council were to approve this amount right now, this. Line transfer and then come budget time, the mayor says, no, I'm not giving an increase. Then it would revert back to the wage it is now?
Yeah, quite possibly, or we would have to ask the council to do a permanent transfer from seasonal to full-time.
So where where's where's the mayor on this?
So the mayor and the controller met with us and they are in favor of the raises in the twenty twenty one budget. Um, and they have told us that they will address this salary study. With the council during your workshops for the twenty twenty two budget. Not that the city will be able to fund all of these increases. That the wage study recommends and I don't see that happening, quite honestly. But even if we can get up to the median point of that study to be competitive with Val Berizzo and. You know, Crown Point, just the region, South Bend. Right now, Michigan City is paying wages way below everyone else. So we are having a huge difficulty. Attracting quality employees.
Okay, thanks. So uh, Councilwoman Jesus.
I just think it's a simple thing. They have the money. They just need to transfer it. To a place where they can pay somebody equal pay to other departments so they can attract a good employee. I kind of see that this is a pretty good solution. It's not going to cost us anything and it's going to help them out. So I, you know, I think it's a positive thing. But, you know, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, so uh, I think we, like I said, all the the points on this one. The only thing I had to say was it. It doesn't seem like if if Mayor Perry isn't signing on to support it. In his budget that he's going to propose for twenty two, then this would only be a bandage on the the bigger problem. And if he's not looking to actually. Increase the wage of these uh employees or these positions. Or have a workshop with the park board before coming to the uh decision to pay them or not. Then what we would be doing would be temporary and and um, we'd be going around what the mayor's wishes are. And if he comes and says, I'm not. Doing an increase because now I have to do it with everyone and the city can't afford it, then would you hire someone at one rate and then? Decrease their pay when the new fiscal year begins?
The mayor has given us support that he would support these raises in the twenty twenty two budget cycle, um, along with the city controller.
Express that to us, so. Not saying that you're not being honest with me, but it's, I like to hear that. Uh, Councilman Preswellinsky and then we're gonna move on.
With regards to the whole whole picture of this. Now, the park department's saying they have this money in the seasonal and we've been addressing everything through the seasonal. Then why weren't you guys, if this was a such a big inequity? Why weren't you addressing it years ago with just taking, addressing it with money out of the seasonal? And it it's not that much of an easy of a solution. On uh, because I feel that if you were so adamant about this increase. You would have got it for this individual that had been at that rate. Was that person hired in at that rate and worked at that rate for huh several years or? Did that individual have uh a longer employment history and then? Did other people get raises in that eight years or seven years? And and this individual didn't for some reason? Or did everybody? Did you guys get a raise? Oh, yes, you got. That individual got the one percent, which one percent of thirteen dollars. But I don't understand if there's this big inequity, why you didn't take it out of the seasonal. And it and to run efficiently. You know, you talked about you have so many people in the seasonal pool. And they're doing this and they're doing that. Well, you know, there's ways to be more efficient on them gates too, to save money. But that that's a de- discussion for a different timeline.
So yeah, we need to, we had a, so we gotta hit this um. So I don't know, some of this stuff without control, I don't know how much we could get through with it, but uh. The, do we have a uh motion on this one before we move on?
Uh, I'll make a motion not to approve.
Um, I'd second that. Uh, all in favor, seeing as we're saying hi? And you oppose the same side? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Easton. Thank you, Ed. Um, so we need to hit this. The deadlines and uh we kind of bounced around, so. Deadlines for the submission and preparation of uh the budget. So um, I don't know what. Controller Hofmaster or Mayor Perry will have to weigh in on this, but they're not present. So I guess we'll just say what we have to say and move on. Uh, this came up from me being on the uh council the last few years and just watching that. Every year when it's time for the budget, we've got this mad dash to the time to submit to the state or the county, whoever. Whoever it goes to from us. And we never have ample time to address each budget. We are rushed through it. We have a day or so or a couple of hours each day to look at. Uh, you know, fifty three million dollar budget and I just doesn't, it it doesn't seem like. We're we're getting the chance to do our due diligence to actually see what what uh. What direction the the mayor's trying to take the city in without uh being rushed. So. Uh, this is why I came up with this and I was happy to get the rest of the the finance committee's support as well as others on the uh council. Just because I think just in in the uh. Just in the spirit of fairness to us, doing our our service to the community, we we definitely need that extra time to make sure that. We're not overlooking anything or just rushing through it. So I'll open up to comments from the uh finance committee.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay, e- uh, email that to Gail so uh she knows. Member, we have the address. Uh, Councilman Preswellinsky.
I think that this is a good move because we can get our questions asked. And just as you said, we will not be rushed in into it. Um, so we can go through it systematically. And I I appreciate you putting this together, Sean.
Thanks.
Seriously. And I'm I'm all in favor of it. Now, it might, uh, I can tell you that. Probably some people won't be in favor of it because they'll have to work a little harder. To do their budget projections, to get it re- to get it ready and not wait till. That sequence that you're in the um, you know, a thirty day window. So I'm in, I'm in full support of this, totally. And I hope all the other council members are too, because it it'll make it easier on all of us. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Dykes.
Yes, so I I do have, um, I I did have a a communication with um Controller Hofmaster. Um, and 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 there are a couple of concerns that um could probably um. Be addressed in the conversation is i- if if we would like to um. Making any amendments, but um I haven't had a chance to um. Return um the call back, but um. I know there was a couple of things that changed um in in one of the clauses that um was repealed. And and I'll I'll get this over to you, um, Councilman Fitzpatrick. But also um with the deadline, the only thing I I would say is that um. I know in one of the whereas, we 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 talk about July sixth. Um, that they still will receive information after that date. So I don't know, um, I know sometimes the state, so I don't know if we put something in there. Um, that accommodates for information that comes in after the after the deadline. But there will be information that that triples in from the state. Um, that, you know, may impact or change. The data, you know, that they provide to us at that time. So I don't know if um. You know, for me, it's more about those those meetings with the departments versus the actual full package. I I just feel like we start so late with those in- initial meetings and and the back and forth. And um, so I I don't know how that that changes. I just think that. There are some things that will be out of the controller's hands that. You know, if it's a law and they can't meet it, I just want to make sure that we we haven't handcuffed ourselves either. I think. Um, we got to figure out if there's some language and it's only on the first reading. So um, it may be that those are some of the things we can talk about. Um, I I haven't had a chance. It it's been a crazy week, but I haven't had a chance to go back to really look at it. I just wanted to make sure. Um, I I presented that because that there has been a communication between us uh about that in in particularly. So I just wanted to share that and hopefully by the council meeting, I I'll have more.
Okay, eh, yeah, like I said, it would have been nice to. Okay, uh, yeah, like I said, it would have been nice to have some, on the controller's office here to explain some of this stuff, but I guess it wasn't important enough to them.
But, but, well, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I did have a conversation.
Right, but.
I, I didn't wanna, um, I, I did have a conversation and some questions, so.
Yeah. I didn't, so.
Okay.
I feel slighted if you had a conversation with them. Uh, was there any other question from the, um, council members?
Um, I, I just want, I, I have a question for Angie. Was this, um, what, can you give me, uh, the gist of what Yvonne was talking about? Was it, uh, projected calculations or was it, uh, about the, uh, because they should know what the assess valuation is when they send out the tax bills in the spring?
Well, I think there's a calendar for the state and the county as well. So, I, I don't know if we took a look at that, but I know she, she did send me the link to the website that shows like that, that calendar from DGLF. Um, so I, and I haven't had a chance to look at it. So, I, I didn't wanna misrepresent, um, the information. So, that's why I just said, you know, it, I'll have more. But I knew it was more about, you know, things that could come in after that date and the impact it could, could have on that final package, right? And if we present something and then things start trickling in, it could change the impact or the outlook on it. And, um, just wanna make sure we're cognizant of that. Um, and the other thing that I, that I wrote down, um, we, we have a clause and I haven't had a chance, it was cited in the first whereas. Uh, it was repealed, um, in twenty-sixteen. So, we gotta go back through, it's just a lot, but we need to have Mr. Meyer. I'll send a list of those items over. I just haven't had a chance to, to really, um, take a thorough look at it.
But I mean, that's, that's, that's great. That's why we, you know, start the conversation now. By the time we make it to the first reading, we'll have some more answers. And if there are more questions, then we'll be able to get some more answers by the time we, we percutuited, but.
This, 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 this time for me is, is horrible. So, I'm just, that's why I was like, okay, let me jump on, but I gotta get off of here. I, I still got another meeting to go to.
All right, Angie, thanks.
Okay, uh, was there anything else on this one?
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion, there a second. Before we take the vote.
Did you repeat that again?
I made a motion to approve the proposed ordinance.
I was recognized for commenting, he came over top of me with a motion. Is that where we're going now?
But, I mean, we gotta.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Is that where we're going now?
Was there a second?
I remove.
Second.
Motion.
Go ahead, Bob, continue on, you're fine.
So, can I make a comment? Um, I know this is, uh, this hasn't been read on first reading, right?
No.
Okay, I, I was just double checking, I, I, cause like I said, um, I know that, there, this is probably gonna go back to the council, uh, the finance committee meeting, finance committee again, um, after the fact and with changes and stuff. So, I, I didn't know if you were just presenting this or if you really were trying to have some action on it today.
Well, yeah, so I was just getting the conversation started because I knew it would be more questions than, than answers initially. So, uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I was just, just pointing out, you know, some of this, this is gonna need a, a lot of changes. I mean, one of the whereas, you talked about us submitting our budget to the county council, we don't want to do that. Uh, we don't submit our budget to the county council. Uh, with Angie, uh, Councilwoman Dyche was, was talking about and, and whereas clause number one, that I see, uh, what a law stated right there has been repealed, she says, with two thousand sixteen. And then she talked about these dates, and I think we had this discussion last, last, uh, budget cycle where we're talking about having the, the controllers office try to get started earlier. But there was just information that wasn't available, uh, for this calculated accurate budget. We would have been flying blind, you know, making these, you know, trying to build a budget when we don't have all the, the, the information to build a budget. Um, so this, this ordinance, I understand where we're going, we're trying to get more time in order to, uh, you know, to get a chance to look at this. If you remember the last year, I was trying to start these as early as possible, start our budget hearings as early as possible. We, but, but they presented me with all the, the data that was telling us, well, we still got information coming in here. Things have to be reconciled, um, before they can make proper projections. And the worst thing that we could possibly do, um, as a city is make a budget that's, that's based on information that's not there. Uh, it makes no sense. So, you know, hopefully we can, we work this out. Like I said, Angie was, was right, we're more than likely gonna have to push it back to another finance committee meeting. And I hope we can get this all straightened out. But like I said, I do understand the fact that we wanna see these things earlier, um, give us a chance to, to go through the budget. Um, you know, you know, I've been doing, been on the finance committee, I'm not anymore, but I was on there with the previous four years. I never had any issue, uh, uh, reading a budget and, you know, a lot of time. But if we do extend it, that's fine, but we just gotta find a proper way to do it. So, we are looking at accurate information though. And, and hopefully we can get all of that settled and get that done.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, those are some, some great points, I appreciate that. Uh, Councilman President Linsky?
Do you wanna move this forward or do you wanna sit on it till after the next?
We'll move it forward, we'll make whatever, uh, adjustments we need to. I mean, both the attorneys looked at it, so if there were IC inaccuracies, I mean, we'll just have to look a little closer before we actually pass it. But, uh, we'll, we'll get the bugs worked out and, and get this in, so.
Do you wanna motion or what do you wanna do here?
Well, we can recommend, I mean, we can recommend to the council something, but we will, I'll mention the discussion in, in the minutes. The only thing we had left was to, uh, discuss this, the primary scholarship and event coordinator, uh, positions. And once again, we don't have any representation from the, uh, controller's office. So, you know, I know that, uh, there's a lot going on, everyone has, uh, things that they have to do outside of their obligation to the city. You know, myself, I, I attended the last council meeting, I was in another state, but because we're virtual, i- it's not that difficult to take an hour or so away from whatever you're doing to, to deal with the, uh, other obligations. And I know that, you know, dealing with Mayor Perry who doesn't think it's important to meet with people, and maybe that's the, the culture he's passing down to his downline and his department heads. Uh, I do wanna appreciate, I mean, I, um, thank, um, the superintendent of parks for at least being here to address the issues that reflect on them. But I, I still don't think that, uh, the controller's office is taking this serious as we are. I think they definitely, they just decided to sit this one out. So, um, with that being said, I know, uh, there was a, there were questions about these two positions. So, who wants to get started?
I think we already, uh, addressed it, didn't we?
The, uh, primary scholarship and, uh, event coordinator, uh, Councilman Simmons?
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my comments. Uh, Yvonne have already addressed it in her email.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and basically, I, you know, I knew that, uh, she was, uh, you know, appointed by the mayor as being the primary scholarship coordinator. My question was, did her Janet, who was appointed, did her salary go back into the general fund? Uh, as well as John Stemley? Stemley, uh, was the event coordinator, did his, uh, salary go back into the general fund as well?
So, uh, I think because I had this discussion, I think those, those funds that were appropriated still are appropriated, uh, because the budget has been submitted. So, I don't, I don't think that's the process, cause I was looking at, um, putting something together that would delete those appropriations when positions become vacant. So, uh, they're not just filling them up with anybody, you know, and, uh, the mayor doesn't have the obligation to explain to us if those positions are actually absolutely necessary to, to operate the city. So, there are some legal restrictions we have with, uh, the budgetary process as far as that goes. So, I, I do know that from a conversation with the attorney. But, yeah, I, I, I would like to know what, what was the process with that. And I know, um, Yvonne did send an email out, but, uh, there's still questions to be answered, so I don't think everything could, could be answered with just those few words. Uh, Councilman Dyke?
Okay, did I, I must have missed that email. So, um, what was the response? So, so that the public know, I, I, I don't, I don't know what, um, the response was.
We'll click and I'll read it.
Well, I, I, I have it.
Okay.
Our response, our response was the primary scholarship director is funded by the primary scholarship fund as outlined in ordinance four, three, nine, three. Uh, the special event planner is funded in the mayor's budget of the general fund. This position is currently budgeted but not filled. Uh, the mayor's executive assistant in the past has been funded in the mayor's budget of the general fund. The position is currently not funded.
Okay, cause we had this discussion, at least I remember being at a finance committee meeting. I mean, the finance may be that, the, when we were working on the budget, and we went back and forth on it. And, um, if, you know, the top, the, the discussion was around how much time is spent doing what? Because if it's, if you're in the mayor's office and you're working, it's split fifty-fifty or is it twenty-eighty? Or it, I would think that there would be some type of, I, the primary scholarship is not a full-time job, at least.
Exactly.
It's, um, at least think about other scholarship committees and you have a committee that helps review the scholarships. I know there are heavy periods of time, like when the semester's starting and you're trying to get the payments for the students. You're trying to organize their package. So, I know, you know, there's a heavy lift at certain parts of the year. But when the students go back to school and they get their check in August, what happens in September, October, November, until the next run at the end of December and early January? It's not a whole lot. I mean, and I'm just, I'm being open, you know, I have two daughters in college that receive primary scholarship money. So, I'm not sure of the lift besides the forms that they fill out and submit, um.
But it seems like a automatic process, I mean, you have some.
A lot of paperwork when you got a lot of students. I mean, I, I just know that it's a heavy lift at certain times of the year. I just don't know if it's a heavy lift that primary scholarship would take care of that salary for a whole entire year. I would think that we would count for the hours and pay a portion of, of the salary out of that, not the full salary. But that's just my opinion, is that we should be accounting for the time spent. And, um, and maybe that's an opportunity for someone, um, within the city to have a part-time position to do something or whatever, or train up somebody young, coming out of school that's coming back. I don't know, they're throwing things out there, but I just don't think it's a full-time position.
My question to Brian, Brian, wasn't, wasn't it year before last where they didn't have that many applying? And I, I don't know about this past year, but year before last, they didn't have that many students even applying?
It, it, I don't know the exact numbers, but I know we haven't had the kind of numbers that we should be getting from the Michigan City High School. And in my opinion, I always thought, when, when we first built this program, I always thought this was a, a full-time position because we needed somebody that understood the whole financial aid system. Where they would do the primary scholarship and then they would be working with the schools throughout the year, making visits, talking about the Twenty-First Century Program and everything like that, because that was all designed to be primary scholarship. Uh, but we, you've never had a person that would take this thing on full-time and, and do that. Because of, you know, you need somebody, in my mind, that understands the whole system. And if you understand the whole system with scholarships and primary scholarship and then getting them, working around a school year, it can be a full-time job if you're doing it. And that's how, and when we built this program, that's what we thought that person would do, because that's what I thought it would do.
You didn't even fund it because it wasn't getting the applicants, so. Uh, Councilman Simmons?
Um, during the budget, during our, um, budget hearings, I posed that question to the mayor and made a recommendation that that position, um, be done as a committee, uh, or part-time. It was clearly said that that was a full-time position and it was questioned, well, will those duties be overlapped? Are, will that position be getting paid from the scholar, the primary scholarship fund and for, under the mayor's budget as well? We were verbally told by the mayor that the executive assistant position will be removed and that the individual, that position will only be getting paid out of the primary scholarship. I then questioned also, why take money to plead the primary scholarship to pay a salary? When, as, uh, Councilwoman Dyke stated as well, it's not a full-time position. It, it's somewhat seasonal at a certain time of the year when students are applying for these, um, for, for assistance. So, I, I would be in the agreement or if we could get a committee together or to discuss this further or should this, or should this not be a full-time position or a committee so that we can have this prepared to present for, and during the budget hearing?
Or better, or better yet, is, as, uh, Councilman Dabney said, it should be an education coordinator for the city. And, I mean, we have, there are so many opportunities for our students. Maybe that person creates an internship program, maybe that person is the person who handles the promise. Maybe that person works with the AK Smith, maybe that person works with workforce development. I think we need that and maybe this is the opportunity for that. And then, again, she needs to be in the office handling that. Because I know, I know Janet, I worked with Janet, um, when I was teaching before, at, um, years ago. So, um, she's been in education, um, for quite a, a long time. So, she has that capability. I think if, but I just don't think there should be, uh, a overlapping of what she, what, what she's doing. I think if she's gonna be the primary scholarship person, she should be that person in her own office building a program, building a feeder system, building those relationships and do that job and be removed out of the mayor's office. That's all I'm saying, is that if we're gonna pay a full-time position, let's do it the right way. Like, the intent was what Councilman Dabney said, because that is a need, we know that. We know that from economic development front and we know our kids need interns when they come back to school. They know they need volunteer opportunities, do that, but separate it so that there's no question on what she's doing in the mayor's office. Let Mr. Jagowski handle his position and let her handle her position separately. And I would be okay with fully funding it from there, because now is a, a value add to the community, a value add to the city and a value add to the students. And so, you know, that's all I would say is that she's gonna be the coordinator, she should be the coordinator. Let her go get that office over on the other side and, and do that work for us.
What other, other comments or questions in regard to those? All right, uh, any other comments? All right, it's about five oh eight, is there, uh, motion to adjourn? All right, it's about five oh eight, is there uh motion to adjourn?
Motion, uh make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
I'll play it receiving five, I say aye?
Aye.
All right, good night.